Okay. Next item. The Long Term Access Plan Updates. Being presented by Mike Kariocho, Chief Operations Officer Josh Cerniac. The FGM Architects and Lance Trist Pepper of Construction. And this item is for discussion only. This is a Plastics Strategic Plan Goal Six and Board Policy Two Color One Seventy and Four Color One Fifty.
So, good evening, Board.
Good evening.
We're going to be zipping through this because the hour is late. But feel free to slowly download or stop it at any point. Uh, the three items we're going to discuss with you this evening is, this is our, our update based on the feedback we got at our last board meeting regarding the timeline, phasing and sequencing for the long-term facilities plan, which as you recall includes Project One work, capital expenditures, and life, health, life, safety. In addition, we're going to be presenting a high-level first pass at a budget review, which is a comparison of the estimates that were originally put forth by the Imagine team with the reality of the work that we're now determining has to happen. And we'll go through that, plus we'll also talk about the process that we're going to go through to bring those two, uh, two very different things back into line. So, and then we'll, we'll talk about next steps briefly, our next updates. We're actually getting into this cadence of coming back to you every month with a slightly different topic because this is, as you know, quite a, quite a large project, so. Um, the, uh, we had two options, uh, options, one and two cleverly named the last time. We're now coming back to you in option one point five. And, um, this option is a combination of the two. So we will, in this option, propose starting, breaking ground in June of twenty twenty. Uh, we will have the Project One work substantially completed by August of twenty twenty-two. And we are going to be taking an additional summer, the summer of twenty twenty-three, for the completion of the capital improvements, the health, life, safety. And it's not going more detailed what each of these major components are. And, um, I'll, it's here in the, uh, this place if you have anything to correct me, jump right in. Uh, the one thing we just wanted to signal to you at this point, there will be an impact to summer school in the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two school year. Twenty twenty-three is still unclear given the volume of work that has to happen, and we're working that actively with our instructional leaders. And we'll have more to report to you on that next month. So next month, we're going to be reporting on the operational impact of the construction. Okay? So, um, hopefully you can read this. This is the, um, updated, uh, option one point five. So you can see the, the South Cafeteria, SRC stands for the Student Resource Center, that's moved up to that summer. We will also be completing the all-gender toilet rooms. Uh, you see an option there for test classrooms, fortified rooms, which should be set up in slightly different configurations that will be able to place teachers in so they can actually try out different options, uh, throughout the course of the year, which will then inform us in terms of the, um, subsequent years in terms of our, our classroom redesign. Director Zed is up there because Director Zed, where it's currently stationed or where it's currently residing will be gone. They really know that, that this goes out with the South Cafeteria, so we have to move them someplace else. Uh, also, neighborhood duplicating is impacted by that, uh, demolition of the South Cafeteria. And we have some capital improvements that were already slated for twenty twenty. Anything to add, gentlemen? Okay. Uh, the, uh, school year, I put this extra column in here. Um, this is the one, this is really the one exception where work will carry over to a large extent in the school year. Uh, the South Cafeteria is a fourteen-month project, so it will actually take two summers to complete. So that's why you see it showing in the school year for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. It shouldn't have no impact to classes or anything else, where we'll have that area basically cordoned off to traffic and so forth. So it shouldn't have no, no impact to, uh, to school operations during the school year. In the summer of twenty twenty-one, we will complete the South Cafeteria and Student Resource Center. We've got a lot of work to do in the special education area, basically bringing them up to, uh, specification in terms of some of their, the special equipment and, uh, facilities needs they have. We'll do part one of that. We'll also attack the, uh, main entrance and the, uh, student commons area and begin our classroom renovations. Also in that timeframe, we'll be doing our health, like, health, life, safety work. Uh, and, um, that's it for twenty twenty. And I say that's it, but it's, that's a significant amount of work. Do you want to speak to that?
I would agree with the significant part, and the only thing I would add is that, uh, once the new Student Resource Center is ready to be occupied, the space that is ordered up to be turned into classrooms, those classrooms, those new classrooms that would infill the old library, two room center, maker's space, those would not be done or completed until October of that year.
I think one of the other things we should probably mention too is, sorry, just we're focusing really hard on the summer of twenty twenty right now, and it's going to take a little bit of time to develop kind of our logistic plans and how we tackle the twenty-one and twenty-two. So we might, you know, we may have to mix some things up just a little bit as it, as we dive into them and start to get more and more information. So the roadmap, you know, further out, definitely will get some refining as time goes on because we really want to focus hard on twenty twenty. And that's, you know, that's basically our focus now until we get the project out to bid.
Okay, so, uh, twenty twenty-two, completion of the special education spaces and the classroom renovations. Health, life, safety continues, and we, uh, pick up capital improvements again. And then you see that last, that last summer of this, or twenty twenty-three. At this point, you can see the Project One work substantially completed there, and what's remaining is the health, life, safety work and capital improvements. So I'm going to move on unless there's questions about these, the timeline, the phase of. Okay? This next slide is, um, just to give you a rough idea of the budget comparison that was, that was, uh, done. So the gray columns represent the, the estimates that were originally put forth in the Imagine plan. Okay, the green column in the center is the actual estimates that were done with, uh, between the design of FGM and the work that Pepper did in terms of what we feel that work would actually cost. The blue, whatever color that is, column, which is, uh, the difference between those. And we did it item by item, um, just so you have some sense of what the variance was. Now, I wanted to just say that this is really just a preliminary first pass. When we first looked at this, the first day I saw it, there was well over ten percent difference between what was originally planned and what was, uh, put forth in terms of the estimate. So this is absolutely a work in progress, but I felt it would be important for the Board at least to see where we, where we were. And, um, I'm actually, in the next several slides, going to take you through the process we're going to go through to get that alignment from what was originally estimated to what actually we're planning on doing. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I kind of, I, I, there's other, there's other things, the other thing I wanted to mention is, if you really, I don't, I'm not going to go through each of these in detail, but if you'd like to go through this, there's a nodes column at the very far right, which has numbers on it. Those nodes correspond to this reasons for variance. Okay, so you, that's the cross-reference. What we wanted to do is just give you some, some very rough idea of where some of the differences came in between what Imagine originally estimated and what we're actually finding. And I'm going to go back and say, what Imagine set out to do is to really create a prioritized list of, of what, or, what the needs were for the district, and basically put those together, come up with some sorts of rough estimates. So this is not, uh, saying they didn't do a good job. This is basically saying they, they came up with certain estimate as we're going through what they did compared to what actually has to happen. To get the scope of the work done, we're finding these differences. So, um, going through them, I would say the, one of the first ones we ran into is the contingency amount that they put in their plan was twelve percent. We're putting in a fifty percent contingency. Uh, the original estimate on the square footage, number two, uh, was different than the design that we actually came up with, and we've made some adjustments there. Uh, also, there was a, a very interesting way that they estimated the new construction. For some reason, it was estimated at fifty percent new construction and fifty percent renovation, which we didn't get a, I was, I still don't understand why they did it that way. We, we reached out to them and they didn't answer that, I, they understood. Josh, did you, you, you help me there?
Wait, you want to flip back to that previous slide?
Sure. I, I think this goes back to what Mike said about what the master plan did and what we're doing now. And the master plan really was setting the, the big picture goals and identifying the location to place particular programmatic elements. And now, as we dive into it, we have to see what is in our way as far as constructing these things, what challenges we have with the existing building. And that was never really the charge, and typically is never the charge of the master plan. So I, I think that's the best way to, to clarify that particular point, that the, the, the level of, of, of detail that is typically looked at in a master plan would not have necessarily occurred specific to the South Cafeteria and Student Resource Center. So while they looked at it quickly, it might have been assumed that the existing South Cafeteria could be renovated with the two-story ambition built on top of it. And, and the reality, which is where we're at now, when really taking these things and, and making the plans concrete, you know, enough to go offset to bid and then to construct, uh, that, that really is not the best way for, for, for the district, for that particular component of Project One.
Mike, do you want to comment on this, or?
I think it's just important to, you could really look at all of the square footages in, in the, well, it looks blue to me. I'll go with blue. So you can see how some of the projects were, you know, were smaller and larger depending on, you know, the count of the main entrance probably was the closest one. But yet, we were a million dollars less on, on that project than the original estimate. Not sure exactly what their intent was when they were looking at that space originally, but what we did was we sat down, uh, with FGM, and they put together just a floor plan, and we walked through and, and walked through the entire thing, and they walked us through everything that they planned to do there. And we put line item budgets to everything, and that's what we come up with. So I went back and looked at what the estimating team did for, for all these projects, and they basically just went and assigned a cost per square foot and said, eh, this looks like a median renovation, we're going to put this so many dollars a square foot at it. So we took it kind of to the next level, and you can see some areas were lower, some areas were higher. I'd say on the whole, we're higher, where the big bogey is, is in that SRC, South Cafe area. And that's exactly what we're saying is, our number represents a hundred percent new building. Their number represented fifty percent renovation and fifty percent addition. And we're, all right, we're twenty-five-hundred square feet larger than them in new construction. So that's where our biggest delta lies. Everything else, in my mind, is kind of workable. Some were lower, some were higher, but the South Cafe is really a big standout. That's our biggest obstacle that we got to overcome and figure out how we get that back on track. The other ones, I mean, some are high, some are low, but they kind of balance each other out for the most part. We'd still be chasing it a little bit if we took the South Cafe out, but it's much more manageable. The South Cafe is what pushes us up close to ten percent. It's going to make it, you know, challenging for us to get that back on budget. We could do it, it's just going to be, we're going to have to be a little more creative and help with it.
So, so back to this, I'm not going to go through these, there are other, there are other differences that were between what, what the Imagine team came up with and what we're actually finding has to be done to make it workable. So, uh, the, so moving on to these next two pages. Uh, these are our first pass ideas, and truly first pass ideas on some of the things which would be potentially considered as alternates. So these are opportunities we have to change the, uh, portions of the scope, maybe not the scope in, in terms of the intent of it, but maybe how we designed it, designing it in a different way to potentially save money. So you can't take any of these to the bank, these are just ideas that were put out there right now. The process we're going to go through is continue to work this list, you know, these conversations in terms of what makes sense, in terms of there's other places where we may be saving money, and go through, and we're going to try to get that, whatever it was, eight, twenty-eight percent, down to something much more reasonable. Okay? And this is an iterative process, so we'll continue to come back as the, as the design continues to evolve, as the, we'll get better estimates, and we'll be able to come back to the Board, and we'll be able to report to you much better where we are in terms of some of these estimates. Uh, so this is, this page here represents the things that we could potentially do to the design to make it, um, less expensive. And there were some other items on this page which are listed, which were not included, that we feel are pretty important to do. So again, we, this is, this is actually a variance in the other direction, which we have to find this money, and this is going to be a challenge too. Uh, so there's, uh, there's a number of items here, again, we're, we're not, we're not suggesting at any, at this point that we want to do all of these things. These are certainly things we want to consider doing. Um, the one example I'm going to put out to you, which we feel very strongly about, we have an opportunity since we're doing an estimation of where the South Cafeteria is right now, we really feel to, to put that back without putting a complete basement in there would be a, it would be a, it would be a tremendous waste. Uh, we're, we're really dying for storage in this building, we have a lot, we have a lot of educational space in this building that's eaten out right now by storage, and it's all chopped up, and this, this could give us an opportunity to fix that problem. But as you can see up there, that is not a cheap fix. So we've got to work, we have to work that into the other, uh, described, other discrepancies that we found to figure out how when we put this plan together, what makes sense. And so we're, we're not ready to say at this point, we're not doing those things, we are doing these things. We just wanted to let you know, this is the process we're going to be going through. Any questions? Okay, next steps. Um, as I said, we're going to come back to you next month, and next month, our topic will be the operational impact, how we will continue to run this school, uh, while we're doing this work. Now, the good news is the majority of the work, the vast majority of the work is happening during the summers. That's good news, but it's not such good news for summer school, so we're going to have to come back to you with how we're going to manage our way through that. Um, but that'll be our October presentation. In November, we're going to be able to come back to you with a conceptual design, so you'll be able to get, uh, a pretty good sense of what we're, we're looking at, what it's going to look like. Uh, we've got some really cool tools, three D, uh, virtual walkthroughs of spaces, so I think you'll really enjoy that. And then in, in December, we'll be in a much better position to take some of the things that we've shared with you today, and they'll be, they'll be more real. They'll actually, we'll have better numbers, we'll have a better idea of what the scope is, what it makes sense to do, what it makes sense not to do. So that's the plan for the next several months. Any questions, comments?
Okay, oh, Sarah.
Sarah, what is your?
Um, so earlier we heard a little bit, we heard some concerns about ADA and accessibility issues. Does that, I don't, I never know if this is on or not, does that fall under the health, life, safety? Or?
Not really.
Or in the redos of the individual areas, like, where does that?
The unfortunate, um, it, it doesn't, the timeframe of that doesn't fit into what we're talking about this evening. We have to make, and we are planning to make some additional changes outside of what you've heard about tonight to meet that timeframe. Because, uh, what we're talking about now starts in June of twenty twenty. Those changes that we're, we're looking to make have to happen by June of twenty twenty. So they have to happen now, and we've got to ask the trustless things.
Okay. Chris?
I, if I could ask.
That's not quite what I asked, but.
Hold it then.
Yeah.
Well, this, I, I don't know that this is to, to answer the question, but with the components of Project One, every area that we renovate will be brought up to meet the, will be constructed to meet the current accessibility code.
Okay.
Where the, the only instances where it, it will not is, um, where it's technically infeasible. And, and what I mean by that is, as part of Project One, there are seventy-six classrooms that are, that are targeted or specified to be renovated. However, the openings from, from corridor into classroom are not necessarily part of that scale. So while a door, classroom door may be in disrepair, the classroom door would be replaced, but the opening may not be reconfigured necessarily to bring it into compliance with the current accessibility code. Everything inside the room, as part of the classroom renovation, would be. The all-gender toilet rooms would be, uh, compliant with the current accessibility code. The new South Cafeteria, Student Resource Center, main entrance, special education area, those would all be in compliance with the current accessibility code.
So why would we make the interior compliant? We're filming, we have, I'm sorry. I, I guess I'm confused. Would we make the interior of a classroom compliant even though students might not be able to access the classroom?
Given, given, given budget that, that was, um, that was appropriate for, for Project One, the, we're not seeing how that could be accommodated. Uh, so it's something that, it, it's something that we would need to discuss, have further discussions on if the district set forth to have all of the classrooms that were to be renovated as part of Project One, the openings to those classrooms should be brought to full compliance with the current accessibility code. That's not to say that some of the openings already as they exist may be incompatible. But there's certainly, given the age of the building, um, you have openings that, that are not in compliance with, with the current accessibility code.
I mean, I know I assumed that we would be addressing that issue as part of our renovations, right? Like, it never occurred to me that that would not be part of this. Um, so I, I would hope that we could at least get estimates as to what additional costs we would incur as a result. It doesn't seem particularly sensible to me to make everything compliant except the entrance of all things.
So considering the process we, we all like to, to me, that would be an item that we would have to put on the list and say, we want to work this in, and then that would be a design decision to be made. All right, so I think you're, you're spot on with it. In addition, we are actually having an accessibility study conducted, and we're just in the process of getting that started right now, which will be able to report all of the various aspects of this building that are of compliance.
And that being done in time to incorporate it into our, our start date for the rest of the construction?
Yes. Yes.
But the whole Imagine, the whole Imagine project, I'm confused because I feel as though we're, um, talking as though there wasn't a understanding and that one of our big issues. I mean, we have videos that we showed of students in wheelchairs not being able to go to bathrooms, and we said that that was the goal, was to, that was our, in phase one priority. And so I'm, I'm unclear as to how we move from that to budgetary issues in some will and some won't when the goal is accessibility for every, I mean, to be in compliance and not technically in compliance, but to be fully in compliance. So I'm, I'm, I just, I don't know what happened to that. And to see, to hear it being talked about as, um, we could put that on the list, that was on the list.
Uh, it really, it really wasn't on the list. It was, well, it may have been said, but there was no provision made in terms of the dollar estimates that were put forth for that. So, and by the way, I think the, the special ed aspect of that, not all the seventy-six classrooms, but the special ed aspect, aspect of that is absolutely, it's called absolutely on the plan, and that will all be taken care of. So that is not a question here. What is questioned is the seventy-six classrooms.
So what we, what you're saying is that in terms of direction and clarity, that the Board needs to be clearer on what we mean by ADA compliance? Is that?
I think what, what, what I hear is being said, the elevators in the restrooms were, this intended to be compliant. The special ed section was intended to be compliant. When they did the scope of the work of, through the Imagine group for the classroom, the process was initially the internal classroom space because the halls were not a part of the discussion, and the doors are a part of the hallway.
Correct.
Is that what I?
Because we, we want to make the school accessible regardless of whether it's a special classroom or not.
Correct.
So, yeah, I, I'm underscoring the emphasis that I'm hearing that we still have to see what the figures are.
And I think the, when it was, because the term accessibility kept being used, it was the perception that that included all accessibility. That's what I, I'm.
Yes, and I just have to say, and maybe it's because it's late, um, but I, it's a little concerning that, um, that would be taken into account, that we would have to, that saying that as a line item or as a specificity, when that is not our area of expertise, but when we say ADA compliance, and then to have to hear that, well, the door may not be because it's a part of the hallway, that seems to, I don't know the, how that falls under the purview of the Board in terms of direction. It is just, it feels like I'm, that's us getting in the weeds for.
No, that's what we're not asking.
No, 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 what we had to ask for, that's my point. It was not a part of the plan. We had to, if the question, as we were talking, that's when it came up, and, you know, I'm looking around, and all of us are like, oh, we already talked about ADA compliance. So to hear classroom but not the hallway, because the hallway is not a part of the plan, it, it feels as though we have taken a step back as opposed to moving forward, and that is somewhat concerning to me.
Can I just, I, I think, uh, what we've said, we're, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I think what they were saying tonight is the initial plans did not have that scope of work in there. We now realize that that wasn't there, and that has to be addressed.
But that was, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to quibble, but that was not addressed until the Board brought it up. And that's the part that is concerning. It was not even on the list of hopeful things. We talked about a basement, but not this part. And that's, that's, I don't know what, what we're doing.
Can I just have one quick note? So ADA compliance is a legal term, right? Like, we have to be compliant under the federal ADA, right? It's also like a floor, that's a minimum requirement. So I mean, I think that what we're talking about here might be ADA compliant, like, we might legally satisfy our requirement, but not meet what we believe the standard should be for a school. So I think those are actually kind of separate discussions we should have.
That, that is true. Uh, and, but to go specifically to the, to the items that were on the budget alignment list that were presented this evening, those were targets specifically for the first component that the Board gave direction to us to, to start with first, which is the South Cafeteria and SRC. So when, as we moved through, we would have brought that specific information on the classroom. So as we move forward, as, as Mike said, we will be back to you many times throughout this process, not through just each estimate cycle, but through each design phase of each component of the project. So we would, we would have brought that forward. That, that wasn't something that, uh, would have been, um, a surprise when we're walking through the newly renovated spaces and someone goes, wait a minute, why didn't we do that? So.
I have a question. You mentioned, like, um, you mentioned that there would be an ADA either evaluation or assessment, or something like that. I, I, I really felt that that was done as well. So I'm curious, what will be included in that and what, how, how has that not already been? I, I'm just, I'm feeling a little bit confused also because I, when you, as soon as you said it, I thought, oh, well, we already evaluated all of that. What's being evaluated now?
Accessibility. So basically going through the entire building and looking at the various aspects of the building that may be out of compliance. So that's what's being done. Well, that was not done.
So what was done, and that's what I'm curious about, what was done? Because we've had a lot of conversations when we talk about that plan, specifically about the accessibility pieces. So if we had not actually done an ADA evaluation of the building, what was done so that we knew that something had, was out of compliance?
Well, with, with respect to the special ed area, there was, what they really did is, excuse me, they interviewed a, a number of the faculty and staff to try to get a sense of what their requirements were. So that was the basis for the gathering of requirements that ultimately ended up being the master plan. Priority seven was done based upon the assumption of those requirements as they were put forth.
Those are requirements which came from the staff, faculty and staff, not from an evaluative source of what the actual ADA complaint needs were?
That's what the master plan.
That's, right, that's, that's helpful to know, and that was, that was really not clear. That was really not expressed in a way that was clear so that, as these things are coming up, because one of my questions was about the elevator and the, you know, what, as these things are coming up, um, having a fuller understanding of what has already been looked at and what hasn't been looked at, and what, what else might be coming that will need to be evaluated would be really useful to know.
Well, and I, I, I'll tell you, I really struggle because that whole section about some of the variances, I, I don't really want to, I want to spend some time so we understand what the differences are. I think it's important that we all understand what was originally. I think it's important that we all understand what was originally estimated, because I know there's an expectation that we're going to stay within our budget. That is, that's, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I don't think I am. So if we have to stay within our budget, which is our intention, then I think we have to spend some time looking at what the, what the original plan was, and trying to reconcile, well, how did it, how is it off? Okay? So, but I, but I think there are, there are a number of things done, which, I don't know if it's reasonable to assume they should have been done or not, that, I don't, I'd rather not get into what they should have done. But the reality of it is, we've inherited an estimate, we inherited a timeline, we inherited the scope. So we're trying to, within those parameters, provide something that works for the district, that makes sense for the district.
I get that. I guess I'm just asking, not like what should have happened, but moving forward, if you know that there are other evaluations that will need to happen, just like the ADA pieces, right? If we could know what those might be as we're engaged in, looking at the information, right? If we know that there's going to be two more evaluations that come through that are going to impact what the scope of the work is going to look like, and doors, I mean, like, that feels like a really solid piece. I would love for us to know what those things are, that's all.
Are there others that you can think of?
Nothing is, is coming to mind. And to, I certainly want to relay that, that accessibility is such an important thing for us, it's such, it's such top of mind, that for the new South Cafeteria and SRC, we are the ones who brought forward, and it's, you know, really uncovered the need for a new elevator to be associated with that new student-centric destination. There was no elevator in which we are still trying to wrap our heads around how that was never figured in, because if you don't put a new elevator in there, students who, as, as an example, if they're in the South Cafeteria with their friends, and they could not take the stairs, they would have to travel over 500 feet to get to an elevator, go up the elevator, and then travel another 200 feet back into floor two of the SRC or floor three of the SRC. So accessibility is, is something that we're constantly thinking about in the design of every component of every project, and this goes back to where our main focus right now, because time is ticking, to get underway with construction for the South Cafeteria Resource Center. And, and as we move forward with the other, designing the other components, all of those things would have been brought forward to the board, providing not only the information as far as the scope, but then also the, the budget impacts. To do things like making openings in classrooms larger, that all would have been, that, that would be, that is part of our process.
Just in the interest of time, and given that this is not an item for, that needs any approval, and clearly we didn't spend a lot more time talking about it, I would say that if there are other questions and things, that they go through mail to Gail and to the team. But I think there have, there has been, and Julie and I will have an opportunity to talk about agenda and expectations for October. They may be a little different than what is shown there. But also just the forward-facing piece, the outward-facing piece, excuse me. I think we're going to have to provide a little more clarity to the community, because we have, you know, we're calling this the Imagine project, and I don't want to distance the work that was done by the committee and say, and now, you know, I don't want to slip into what they did and what we're doing. So I really think it's important for us to, to communicate, excuse me, communicate outwardly the work that we're talking about, and understand that the same way that board members are asking questions, it's all being filmed, and people access things, and it's so important to our community, I think we have to stay on top of how we communicate as well. So, it's 8:52, and we could probably keep all here, probably.
I think I do want to mention one thing too, just so, so we understand. When we were putting our estimate together, there was one component that we didn't have a strong handle on, and that was, you know, hazardous materials that we may encounter during construction. So I know you have a consultant, that you're about to, I think, re-up their contract, and then once you do, then they're going to start going through the building and looking for the hazardous-containing materials, they'll put together a list and price all that up. But for budget purposes here, I think we priced, it was like one and a half percent of the total cost of the work, or it was about, it was like $700,000 as, as a placeholder. But I just want to make sure that you knew that, because that was one area that we didn't really have enough information to put numbers together on, so hopefully they come back and it's less. But at least one of the.
Sorry, Bill.
I know.
I do want to just say, just in concert with what you said, the Imagine committee did what we asked them to do. And so none of the people on the committee were architects, and we did have a firm working with us, but they, they kind of answered the questions we asked them. With any project, and I'm speaking now from experience, there are always unknowns that come up, and there are things that sometimes we will sign up. I also want to remind the board that when we, we talk about the budget, the numbers that we gave were estimated numbers, because we were leery at the time of saying, this is what it's going to cost, because as you move down and get towards the actual construction time, those prices change. But I don't want anyone to think that the Imagine group did not do what we asked them to do. Hindsight, maybe we should have been more specific with some of our questions before the item came forth, such as the doors. But I just wanted to say that, and just to remind us that as construction projects come forth, we have to be more conscious of some of those questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, oh, we pulled, we pulled the school resource contract. The next item is the variance report. This is, this is for discussion only, information only. And this item is in compliance with Board Goal Six, Strategic Plan Goal Six, and Policy Four Color Ten, and Four Color Four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, so the variance report, this is our report for the variance report. Basically, what we do is we compare last year's budget of the nationals, and we look at this year's budget, or I should say, 19's budget of the nationals. So, looking at, looking at everything we got on here, what we normally do is we put a little note, we put a little letter on it, and on that sheet, we will explain what the variance of that. So I'm not going to read through everything, but you'll see the presentation on it. We do this both for expenditures and for revenues. And if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I have one question, I don't think I really want. You didn't note the fact that revenue from local sources dropped from 57.7 to 54. I understand the rationale for it, but my question is, is have you taken that into account as you create the five-year forecast on a go-forward basis?
Yes, and, and part of that, if you look at that, that dropped down from local, when we're looking at the general fund, but if you go down to looking at site and construction fund, that actually went up compared to budget, and so did the twelfth, I'm sorry, the twelfth, the fire prevention and safety, that had also gone up. So that sort of washed that center, but that is something that we have taken into consideration, because we're looking at our construction and we're looking at our life safety.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I don't think we're. Thank you.
I think we did that, but.
The next item is, under instruction, is the consolidated district plan application. This item is, we will be coming back at the special board meeting to ask for approval. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Two and School District Policy Six Color One Act. Coming for Mr. Johnson and Dr. Walker Pauls.
Hello, everybody.
And, I thought Cindy was coming with me. I'm trying to cap it everywhere.
It doesn't look like it. So this is a new state requirement. This is a way to make grant applications more efficient in the state of Illinois. And so what you see here is a new consolidated plan that encapsulates a lot of information that had previously been part of IDEA Title I, Title II, and where applicable, Title IV program. And so you'll, there's a lot more breadth in this consolidated plan than had been in previous plans. In addition, previous plans weren't necessarily required to be approved by the board each year. Consolidated plan is each year before moving forward. And so the last thing I'll say, just by way of general introduction about this, is that as a reminder, a program evaluation for the major funding, a lot of that comes out of our NICA grant, was presented to the board last April, when we presented the program evaluation for our reading and mass support program. As a reminder, this, this grant also, in addition to our special education program, programming in IDEA, it also, it also is used to support our teacher mentoring program, our summer school programming, and of course, funds also for non-punkies by way of both Title I and Title II.
I apologize for the small font, the application. I know, it's, it's.
The, we don't get to. I know the, the state gives a, a way to print this out by PDF, and as part of the consolidated grant, they say use this print for board stuff, so that's what I'm using. So that's what you got.
So they don't, they don't want us to.
So we should complain to the state.
Well, if you'd like, I'll be having to complain to the state on your behalf. Yeah, but that's, that's what it is. This is, so this is just the plan for the court. This is not funding allocations. This is not the overall funding amount, nor how those funding amounts are going to be broken down. And we anticipate, as it is almost every year, we'll submit this to the state, and they'll come back for revisions, and we'll, we'll go back and forth until it's finalized, which is how it works.
Just ask, ask the family engagement in that requirement.
Yes.
Is that reflective here?
It is, actually. In fact, you'll see, in very small font somewhere within there, there's a reference to all of the dates that we used for our family engagement activities previously in this past school year, and a stated commitment that we will continue to engage families for those events in the coming years. And for all of those events, we have kept, not only dates, but programs for them. We keep rosters of attendees, things like that, that's it for our records.
Okay. My final question, and, does our family, excuse me, do we know that it's effective?
We know that the programs that are used to fund are effective, as we saw in the program evaluation. Engagement for a lot of, I wouldn't say all of our engagement. There's a lot of family engagement activities that we have in place specifically for our support programming, as you see through summer school, and so it's linked to it. But a separate program evaluation specifically on the family engagement isn't something we have got individually targeted, it's something we consider forward. But it is linked to those things that we have evaluated as far as overall programming, for sure.
If there are no other questions, we'll come back at the special and ask for approval.
Thank you.
I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Moore. Oh, no, it's me. Okay. The Board of Education Goals Discussion.
Is everyone engaged and energized?
What you see are your goals from last year, and the discussion towards board goals for this year, and this is in compliance with Policy Two Color Two Board.
Last question. Has, I would just tee this up by saying that in my review of the, the goals from last year, one of the things I was trying to do is to see, do we meet our goals? And there, the monitoring of the strategic plan seems to be something that we talked about, and we have said, being a little more descriptive and in terms of accountability and metrics. So I think that is the work of the board. I don't know, we have our retreat coming up as well, which may help us to not do that work, but to understand kind of how we should do that work, if that makes any sense. And the, also, the, we had the, we know that the procedures for the racial equity policy are happening this year. But it says to using the format of the general. So we're talking about the procedures that need to accompany the racial equity policy, and that's in development. So that may be something we need to talk about, if that is a goal that we put forward. And we talked a lot earlier about the systemic use of restored practices, so we may need to, we may need to figure out how we want to frame that.
Can we just go back to two? It says approve racial equity policy. The board did do that.
Did do that, right.
And so the piece that still has the lingering as the procedure.
But, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I just want to make sure I'm.
I gave rocks. So I would just, in terms of opening up to discussion, have, do folks have ideas about how they want to proceed with the, talking about board goals? Why you all are, okay.
I think that the ones that are still in progress, I, we would want to, at some level, maintain those as goals. Maybe they need to be modified, adjusted, or, you know, more defined, or add a different scope for it. But, yeah, and the equity policy needs, because the policy's in place, but in addition to the procedures manual, there were quite a few things that Dr. Adams presented.
Right.
So it's like, I feel like there, there's more need to that.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with what he said about whatever's still in process. Of course, of course, we should bring those, sorry, we forgot. But I think, I've heard a lot of discussion, I think from every board member, and I certainly agree with this, that one of the new points of emphasis is the overall accountability of whether or not we're accomplishing the systems change that we want in our racial equity policy. So I think maybe, you know, some clear identification of the outcomes and the timing for achieving those outcomes would be nice board goals to identify for this coming year. And then we can create an accountability framework around that, so that we can stay, you know, at the board level where we're supposed to be, and let the administration implement and monitor, and I think that would be a really good supplement to what was accomplished last year.
What else went away?
I like what Ralph just added. Another topic that has come out, again, about accountability relates to just policy, and we mentioned it, so I, that's not on here, and we can pile on and then decide what we want to find, ink up, but that's, that's one that's been talked about.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that's procedure, it's accountability of the board to its, to the policies. So I think that fits for us.
Okay, great.
I don't think you had anything of Ralph that I've covered.
Sarah, you have?
I concur with what the board needs, the board needs.
Do you like to talk about the board needs?
I think they articulate things very well. I think there's so much contained in Strategic Plan. I think we could really continually pay attention, as we do, but just to really make sure and check in that we're fulfilling those goals or making strides towards them. So I think there's so much here. It's an economy of words, but there's a lot. So I think it makes sense, as Gina mentioned, to not just let these go, right? It's a continual process, and so I think it's the right track.
I did have one that has to do with board development, and we have talked about it a bit, and we've had prior special board meetings talking about racial equity. What I would like us to think about is how, as a board, and I was. What I would like us to think about is how as a board, and I was reviewing the first meeting, I think we did this in my time on the board, 2016, when we had consultants come in and talk with us and we set goals then about the work of the board to be able to be informed personally as well as, as a collective on issues of racial equity if our mission is about looking at things through a racial equity lens. We have, we're in discussions now for upcoming board retreat. We shouldn't be here if we're going to call it a retreat. I'm going to keep saying that to the board so we can find a place to, and still open and accessible as, as we did when we were at the library a few years ago, but to talk about what work board members require to be able to make, to talk and understand and appreciate what we mean by racial equity and looking at things through that lens. And, you know, we, there's a lot of diversity among us in, in terms of kind of how informed we are on that, but I would say that each year I feel it's important that as we are directing what the goals are for the district as a board, our development is crucial as well. So we could think about how, what that looks like.
So I'm supportive of that completely. One way we did that in D-90, because we were challenged with a number of issues on racial equity in D-90, like every district, is that's honest, is that when we finally identified a provider for ongoing professional development for staff, that was going to be three or four times a year, get embedded in practice, that same provider also then did it for administration board. And so we went through trainings at public meetings and it's part of our practice now that at least annually we go through the training at the D-90 board level. It's a really good thing for the board. Racial bias, implicit bias is a real difficult thing to deal with. It's a real difficult thing to see that you have, but that's the only way, honestly, looking at it and evaluating it to really understand how it operates and to then put in place the policies and sort of the targeted outcomes you want to see for your systems change that will actually address it. So I strongly support.
And I would say that we have taken that step and the work that, I want to make sure, and I'm going to borrow one of Craig's things that I learned about not having a activity bias. I want us to be able to, be able to evaluate our learning in the same way that we are asking of our district administration and staff. So we have had, you know, trainings and things like that, but I, I'm asking us to go a little deeper. And it's a time commitment, so we have to decide how we prioritize that type of work given that it is the cornerstone of the strategic plan. So I don't know if others want to weigh in on that, but that is, I think we've had some challenging discussions and at times talked across each other when it came to issues of race, racial equity. And I think that this is a way for us to, in a safe space with the proper facilitation to be able to, to be more informed, but also to do some of the relationship building and work that we're asking of our other staff.
Well, I've asked for that. Can anybody else ask for that?
So it'd be helpful if folks could, Gina, I know that you have and since maybe, you know, third, fourth meeting, so this is our, this is the crucial time to be able to kind of lay out any suggestions you have so that, you know, as a board we can discuss them and others as well.
I feel like the ongoing conversations over the next few years are going to be increasingly difficult. I feel like a open record because I know I've said this a few times already, but I think that if we engage in some systemic work together, the process of, Ralph has mentioned it a number of times, like the process of uncovering what we don't know that we don't know and the importance of that and really digging in for ourselves as a critical piece to affecting systems change and for us to affect systems change because we're the people that are in a position to affect the system. I think that the work would need to be ongoing and we need to make commitment to, to having it be not a, not a once or twice a year type of deal.
So we're saying the same thing? Yeah. Okay. So it would be, if you have what your, what that looks like for you, I think that is, because you do have experience with this work and, you know, as we have various expertise sits on the board, we have to access them. So if you would be willing to suggest some things, I think that'd be helpful for anyone.
If you will. Always will. I get to do this in all the environments that I'm in now. It's not like I do it in one place. I do it everywhere. I do it even from my day gig now. So I'm feeling pretty fortunate and grateful for that.
So when would, I know that we have a meeting coming up next week. That won't be the time, so should we set our October, maybe a low meeting to further? I'd like to say to finalize our board goals. Hello?
Yeah.
I had something to this piece too. In my experience in our community, our conversations around this seem to get stunted at a certain point, and I don't know if it's, it's just my experience in all the, all the levels that I'm in the community and now. And I, what I'm hoping for our board and engaging in work, this work in a different way, is really that we have an opportunity to demonstrate what it really means to create community in a new way. And by that I mean where the conversations are getting stunted, where there's us versus them, where's there's othering, where there's all the things that just come up, the emotions and the pieces that are uncomfortable. I just would like to encourage us to look at it, to look at it as a way of developing community partnerships and relationships even amongst our board. Because I find that for a community that is so incredibly outwardly committed to equity, our processes in community around being authentic and really furthering our relationships in a way that allows us to really dig deep into what we need to do are sometimes stunted. And, and for me, it's about building community and specifically with being new on the board and not knowing everyone in this group really well, like the opportunity for us to build deep relationships and what community really means feels really, really important for us being able to move this work forward. And when we talk about restorative practices and how we're having an expectation of a school building a culture of community, I feel as though it would be really imperative for us as a board to be able to model what that community actually looks like and means and feels. And I, I'm not saying that we don't have that, what I'm saying is I would like to put the development.
So Gina, I guess a question I would have is, I understand the words that you're saying, but I don't understand what the ask is.
The ask is, yeah, I'm so happy to be even more specific. The ask is really that we will do whatever work is required, even in uncomfortable situations and conversations, to deepen our relationships in the ways that allow us to move to another level of accomplishing the goals of equity. And when I say that, I'm thinking of examples that I see in the community where people get together and have conversations, but there's always some underlying piece that's not being addressed. And I would love for us to be the kind of group that can address what those things are. So it just requires, it requires a deeper commitment and in the ways that I've seen other communities work this work and it, and it work, it actually does stem from circle and the opportunity to know each other on multiple levels and have that shared experience and understanding that sometimes we don't necessarily get when we're sitting at a table sharing our views and ideas and we come from totally different places. So maybe I'm asking for more circle, Craig?
Yeah. I think it's not the, it's not the, it's not the ask and it's not the development of community. It's, okay, so what are the mechanisms for, how do we do that? You know, it's, it's not, it's very difficult to do in a public meeting like this. And it's just unclear to me how you create, how you create the environment to have that conversation, to build that depth of relationship. And I'm not saying it's, I have issue with it, I'm just struggling with the how you accomplish it in this form.
It is, it's the same that we would accomplish it if we were in a circle that had confidentiality rules. It would be setting agreements and having clear agreements of how we communicate, how we share and what we're, and our willingness to have conversations in a different way. And some of those pieces are, there are lots of people that train in the work of like how to have a conversation. So to me, I don't find it a hindrance that we're in a public forum in an OMA situation. I find it actually a benefit because we have the opportunity to model some different things. But, but the sharing would look a little bit different and there would be, I would hope that there would be intentional opportunities for us to deepen in our, in our ability to share with one another, which really looks like circle. I can tell you in another community that I'm working with, what they're doing is they've had like multiple governing bodies come together and actually sit in circle together and have the conversations around what comes up for them as a community member, what comes up for them as a person who is holding a position, what comes up for them based on their cultural identity, what, you know, and just really looking at the system overall and each of their parts in it and how, and how are they either personally affected, how they move through the work, what, how it's affecting their decision-making processes. So it's, there's, there's so many layers to it and we could determine how we would like that to look. I just know that the, that my experience in all part of my lifetime, it tends to get cut off at some point and we just get back to business as usual. And I would like us to explore a different method of this. Thank you.
So the challenge that I, you know, we're focusing on board goals, so where I'm struggling is what, you know, we've talked about goals in other contexts and, you know, did we clearly understand and what, you know, was there, everyone picturing it the same way? So I think as a starting point is to take what you're talking about and be able to, in, in goal formats, say that this is what we want to achieve. Because what I think you've asked her was more than how do we do that is kind of the, is, is the meat part, but I think we need to, to turn it into a goal.
And I think that points out beautifully how coming from different places that I kind of coming with what I was saying, how to do that, coming from a place that we're understanding what the goal is. So that's a perfect, I think, example of the work that, the clarification, I guess, that needs to happen. And I mean, the things I've heard tonight, and I think the example you just gave Gina, the different roles or hats that we may wear in decision-making and being able to talk about things like that and, you know, having a racial equity literacy with the goal of building, you know, our community and, and the work that we're trying to do. So it's, I think we've heard a lot of things and I think that that's a perfect way to, to do it is to put it down and then underneath as we don't bother the bullet points of how we get there. So that's it. Future agenda items. Is there any time for any future agenda? Does anyone have anything? We did a lot this evening. Okay. Well, then I will adjourn. All in favor?